Okay, well, we'll hope. Good evening, everybody. I want to welcome you to the Brevard City Council Regular Meeting of August 4th. And it is great to see a full house. I mean, I think every seat in here is full. All right, there's one, one empty, but there's someone standing, so it's really full. All right, we've got a full house, but that's wonderful. And so I want to thank everybody who has come out on a rainy Monday evening, and everybody that is watching the live stream. I want to start by introducing the people up here. On my far right is our city attorney, Mac McKellar. Next to Mac is City Councilman Lauren Wise. Next to Lauren is City Councilwoman Pamela Holder.
Good evening.
Next to Pamela is City Councilman Mac Morrow. I'm Mayor Maureen Coploff. On my immediate left is our city clerk Denise Hodston. Next to Denise is Councilman and Mayor Pro Tem Gary Daniel. Next to Gary is Councilman Erin Baker. And next to Erin is our city manager, Wilson Hooper. Okay, with that, I would like to ask Pastor Victor Foster from the Glade Creek Baptist Church if he would come forward and do the invocation.
Hello, honorable council members. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Victor Foster, who is Associate Pastor of Glade Creek Baptist Church with my pastor Reverend David Suber. And it's indeed an honor for me to be able to take this time to offer the invocation for this event. Heavenly Father, we truly thank you for this great time to be able to come together. Lord, I pray that as the council members deliberate over different issues, that you would give them wisdom and knowledge, that you would show them the right path to go down. Lord, and I pray that not only that they do what you allow them to do, but that this city would be blessed because of it. We have different communities throughout the city, but we all are one big family. And we ask you, dear God, to use them to help us grow together, to stay strong together, to love together. For it's in the name of Jesus we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pastor Vic, would you tell us a little bit about Glade Creek Baptist Church?
We believe what the Bible says about loving one another. You're known by the way you love each other. So we reach out in love to do whatever is needed in our community, whatever is needed in our congregation. And we want everyone to know that this is, that where we serve is God's house. And whoever so will come, we want to welcome them in the doors. But we also work real hard to do a lot of outreach throughout the community. And we don't consider just Glade Creek area as our community. We consider this town as our community. Because if we can help each other, we grow stronger together. And we can show, we can do a lot of things when we work together, as everyone has seen when Helene hit. People didn't ask about politics, they didn't ask about race. They wanted to know what they could do to help each other. And that's the way we want our church to be.
Thank you, Vic. Thank you for joining us tonight. If everyone would please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Attention, honor, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Madam Mayor, you do have a quorum. All members are present.
Okay. Counsel, you've got the draft agenda in front of you. Are there any proposed changes?
I'd like to make a couple, if I may. I'd like to ask that we move K6 to New Business. There's a report in that, those minutes that I would like the council to be aware of. And under advice of counsel, I would like to ask that we move the public contents to H and certificates, awards, and recognition to G.
Any other proposed amendments to the agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the agenda is approved as amended. Counsel, you've got the minutes of the June 16th, 2025 Regular Meeting sent to you. Are there any corrections or changes? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Folks, I see we've got a lot of folks out there. Come on in where you can hear. Just sort of come on in in front of a little table there. Just want everybody to be able to hear. I don't think there are any actual seats left. Oh, there's one there, and there's one over here. Couple of seats. Let's take some time, come on in. See if there's a couple of seats over here. Couple of guys are just vacated some for y'all there, so please come on in. Okay, anybody else? I mean, feel free to walk on in, there's a couple of chairs. Linda, there's a couple of chairs. Okay, all right. Okay. Okay. Now let's see where we were. Okay, all right. Now, approve the minutes. All right, we are now, since we changed the agenda around a little, we're going to go right into one of the best parts of tonight. And I am so excited because tonight we are doing, well, we are doing an award and then we're doing a swearing in. But first, we are doing a very special award. There are very few times in, I think, any elected officer's career when we get to recognize somebody who has worked for our organization for 45 years. And, you know, I ask everybody here, just think about where you were 45 years ago. I mean, this individual, Emory Owen, who worked for our, yes, and his grandchildren. Thank you, yes, pointing that out. He's here with his family. And we are just very, very pleased to be able to recognize such superb loyalty and dedication, really a lifetime of loyalty and dedication to all of you, to this community. And I cannot tell you how many times Emory has saved us because he kept that water treatment plant operating. Now, you know what happens if that water treatment plant isn't functional, right? I mean, it's pretty critical. Well, he has done an absolutely incredible job. And I'm also excited today because we have a special guest. And I would like to ask Holly Jones to please come up front here. Holly is Governor Stein's Director of His Western Office. Did I get your title right, Holly?
Perfect.
Okay, and Holly is here to give a very special award to Emory. So Holly, over to you.
Thank you so much. Well, Mr. Owens, would you join me, yes, here? Owen.
Yeah, that's fine. Owens are rich.
It's not wrong to honor the small riches for sure. Well, I am thrilled to be here representing Governor Stein today. And it's one of the privileges of my job to stand in for him and because I'd like to present on his behalf this Order of the Longleaf Pine. It is the most prestigious award that the governor gives. And your longevity of service is amazing, as has been referenced tonight. And I read all, I read about you before I came, and as has the governor. And it's not just the length of your service, but I think it's also how you serve and your dedication to community and the above and beyondness of how you clearly got a heart of this public servant. And you're, you are so admired, and I know you're going to be greatly missed. And so this is from the governor, and they have done a beautiful job in presenting this to you. One of the benefits of being the newest member of the Order of the Longleaf Pine is that you can give this toast, and I'd like to just read the toast when you see fit. So the toast is about our beloved state. And so as someone who's now an ambassador for the state of North Carolina, here's the toast. Here's to the land of the longleaf pine, the summer land where the sun does shine, where the weak grow strong and the strong grow great. Here's to down home, the old North State. Congratulations and thank you so much on behalf of Governor Stein.
Emory, can we get a picture with your whole family? Get your family up there. Get the whole family. Get your grandkids up there, get your mother. All right. Come on, get a picture with your family.
This is for generations.
Yeah.
That's right.
We ready? Three, two, one. One more. Thank you.
Speak, Emory, you get to speak. You get to say whatever you want.
Well, I had a while. I'd like to thank, first of all, I'd like to thank my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, for all the years he's given me. I didn't think I'd ever live this long. I appreciate so much the people that I get, had a chance to work with, the people that helped me along the way, the people that passed their knowledge on to me about wastewater, about a little bit of water, and a lot of maintenance. I had a lot of maintenance in my 45-year career. I loved going to work for the wastewater treatment plant. I worked at the water plant for a while. To me, it was pretty monotonous. But I went to a wastewater plant and I went, now I can do this. Because I didn't know from one day to the next what I would be doing. One day I'd be running the lab, one day I would be mopping the floors, one day I'd be cutting grass, one day I'd be rebuilding pumps. I got to rebuild pumps. And over a period of time, I learned about microbiology and stuff like that. And the city of Brevard made sure that I had a very good education. They sent me to UNC Chapel Hill for a lot of schooling and also local workshops and stuff like that. And Blue Ridge Tech, I loved tech school, so I got educated over the years. So I'm very thankful and blessed for my family standing behind me. I, and a lot of people don't know this, but I'm a graduate of Cleveland Baptist College. And my wife stood by me all those years. And I'm not a very good typist. I was good at running my mouth, but she was good at running the pipe rivers and helped me get out of there. Anyhow, I appreciate the opportunity to serve Brevard and serve all the people that I've worked in under Mr. Hooper and everybody, all the city councils and the mayors that I've worked with. And Denise, she always kept me straight. The last few years, she would make sure that I was, I mean, on time, but sometimes I'm not. Anyhow, I did have it written down. I'm supposed to be here August the 4th at my, anyhow, it was a pleasure. Want to thank everybody I worked with. Thank you for all the lessons I learned in my life and for the friendship and camaraderie.
Thanks, Emory. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right, we are now going to move on to swear in two new police officers, which I am so thrilled about. Again, a wonderful way to open our, our meeting today. So I'm turning it over to Denise, our city clerk, who does all the official swearing in. And I think we'll just wait for everybody, yeah.
Thank you, Emory.
Oh, wait, we got to come this way? Okay. So we are going to hold the Bible. And you're going to put your left hand on the Bible, and you're going to, I guess they want us to move this way. We have a photo op here, so, okay. So if you could raise your right hand and repeat after me. And there are two oaths, okay? Sworn police officers are required to take the constitutional oath. And there's a separate statutory oath that you'll take after we finish this one, all right? So first of all, repeat after me. I, Hannah Langford Owen,
I, Hannah Langford Owen,
do solemnly and sincerely swear,
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States,
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina,
And I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina.
and to the constitutional powers and authorities,
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
which are or may be established,
Which are or may be established.
for the government thereof,
For the government thereof.
that I will endeavor,
That I will endeavor.
to support, maintain, and defend,
To support, maintain, and defend.
the Constitution and laws of said state,
The Constitution and laws of said state.
not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States,
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
to the best of my knowledge and ability,
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
and that I will faithfully discharge,
And I will faithfully discharge.
the duties of my office,
The duties of my office.
as a law enforcement officer,
As a law enforcement officer.
for the city of Brevard,
For the city of Brevard.
so help me God.
So help me God.
There's number one. Number two's a little short. Okay, one more time. I, Hannah Langford Owen,
I, Hannah Langford Owen,
do solemnly swear,
Do solemnly swear.
that I will be alert and vigilant,
That I will be alert and vigilant.
to enforce the criminal laws of this state,
To enforce the criminal laws of this state.
that I will not be influenced,
That I will not be influenced.
in any matter,
In any matter.
on account of personal bias or prejudice,
On account of personal bias or prejudice.
and that I will faithfully and impartially,
And that I will faithfully and impartially,
execute the duties of my office,
Execute the duties of my office.
as a law enforcement officer,
As a law enforcement officer.
according to the best of my skill, abilities, and judgment.
According to my skills, abilities, and judgment.
so help me God.
So help me God.
Okay.
Stay on. There you go. I don't think you hit, I think you're a text. There you go. Congratulations.
Assignate now, sure. Okay, so I actually have two of each, so. And this one here, where does she sign? Does she sign here? She signs here. Okay. So if you want to sign these two, there. And I'll get me your office tomorrow. Thank you, Hannah. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Hannah.
Nice to have Jesse.
Bring Bluey.
Okay.
Are you going to help Daddy out? Okay, we got to come this way, Jesse.
Help Daddy out.
The photographer's giving us orders. You want to hold the Bible, all right?
You want to help, Mommy?
She can help. Okay, just like Hannah, you have two oaths to, to. Can you get, can you all see him, or should we turn? Should he turn a little more?
I can, yeah, I, well, that's good.
Okay, you ready? I, Jesse Vincent Wallen,
I, Jesse Vincent Wallen,
do solemnly and sincerely swear,
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States,
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance,
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
to the state of North Carolina,
To the state of North Carolina.
and to the constitutional powers and authorities,
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
which are or may be established for the government thereof,
Which are or may be established for the government thereof.
that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend,
That I will endeavor to maintain, support, maintain, and defend.
the Constitution and laws of said state,
The Constitution and laws of said state.
not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States,
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
to the best of my knowledge and ability,
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
and that I will faithfully discharge,
And I will faithfully discharge.
the duties of my office,
The duties of my office.
as a law enforcement officer,
As a law enforcement officer.
for the city of Brevard,
For the city of Brevard.
so help me God.
So help me God.
Okay, there's number one. I, Jesse Vincent Wallen,
I, Jesse Vincent Wallen,
do solemnly swear,
Do solemnly swear.
that I will be alert and vigilant,
That I will be alert and vigilant.
to enforce the criminal laws of this state,
To enforce the criminal laws of this state.
that I will not be influenced,
That I will not be influenced.
in any matter,
In any matter.
on account of personal bias or prejudice,
On account of personal bias or prejudice.
and that I will faithfully and impartially,
And that I will faithfully and impartially,
execute the duties of my office,
Execute the duties of my office.
as law enforcement officers,
As law enforcement officers.
according to the best of my skill, abilities, and judgment, just of my skill,
Feel.
abilities and judgment. so help me God.
So help me God. You'll stay on there.
Congratulations.
Welcome aboard, Jesse. Yeah, that's good.
Yeah.
All right, well, now that we've had that wonderful experience of the swearing in and the incredible award, we are going to move on to public comment. And here are the rules concerning public comment. The public is invited to speak during public comment at this time on any topic unless it is a public hearing item on the agenda. And we do have two public hearing items on the agenda. Anyone who wants to speak must register with the city clerk, which is what the sign-up list is. When it is your turn, step to the podium in front of city council, right there. State your name and your address clearly. And limit your comments to three minutes or less and avoid repetition. And I will give you a warning when you have 30 seconds left on the clock. Direct comments to the full council, not to an individual council member or to staff. All right, and I will call people up in the order in which they signed. Our first speaker is Joellen Rishauer.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Joellen Rishisher, and my address is 25 Chipmunk Court in Brevard. I represent the Brevard Sustainability Council. And I'm here with a few colleagues. I'd like to point them out. There's Reed Wood and Chrissy Lamp here, and Destiny Pettit on this side. We are a new group that arose out of a mutual connection.
We are a new group that arose out of a mutual concern over climate change. We hope to be honored tonight with a sponsorship by the city. We're very excited about that. We are deeply concerned about climate change, but I must state that we are also very positive. We see opportunities through sustainable activities for our community to thrive while we preserve the surrounding forests and the waterways that we all love so very much. So we look forward to working with our beloved city and staff and city council administration. And we'll explore this new relationship, we hope, this evening. So I thank you very much. That concludes my remarks. Pretty brief, huh? Thank you. You did quite well, Joellen. Thank you. All right, our next speaker is Drew Dean.
Hi, and thanks for the opportunity to speak to the council. My name is Drew Dean and I live.
Speak up a little Drew, it's hard to hear.
You might want to tip the microphone.
Put it up, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I live at one sixteen West Main Street and I have a business right on Main Street and some on my fellow block. Business owners are also here tonight to support me. So I'm here to express concern for the street camping that has most recently happened downtown, but also as a general concern to the entire community. Most of you have seen photos attached along with an email I sent to the head of Brevard director. Although law enforcement has helped to lessen the frequency of this issue downtown, it still remains a huge, specific problem in the Clemson Plaza. It is within the statutes of North Carolina law that the ordinances, along with signage, can be implemented to include specific directives against street camping and loitering in public spaces. There are no clear rules in Clemson Park and the camping and loitering in that space is deterring businesses, business on our block. It's a threat to public safety and public health. I've witnessed both camping and loitering in the plaza to exceed five or more hours at one time where the same people do not move. People are intimidated from entering the space or using the covered bench. It's pretty much impossible as it's constantly monopolized. Last Monday, I attended a safety committee meeting and was disheartened that this subject, including other areas in the community where it affects, was nowhere on the agenda. Two of my biggest takeaways from this meeting were, number one, law enforcement doesn't have much support to handle this type of issue. It's clear they need some support from social workers or substance abuse specialists. One such model that could be studied is the Community Care Program in Silva. They have clear partnerships and support, community support. Sorry, I'm nervous. Number two, the city doesn't seem to have a clear set of goals and objectives to deal properly with this issue. A perfect model for success is the one Pitt County hasn't implemented. They created.
Thirty seconds.
They created a ten-year plan beginning in two thousand eight with clear goals, objectives, and strategies, and have seen an eighty-eight percent success rate in reducing chronic homelessness. Both counties I've mentioned have developed solid outreach support to achieve positive results. And I'm sure our community can learn from their systems and connect with their support. All of the information is out on the internet and easy to find regarding those plans. Thank you for listening.
Thank you Drew. Our next speaker is Jesse Draper.
Good afternoon, Mayor Koppeloff, city council members and guests. My name is Jesse Draper. I live at eighty-three Caden Lane. I'm here today to speak about the Brevard twenty thirty comprehensive land use plan and the Unified Development Ordinance UDO. Reviewing the proposed Burlhaven development, which is on, going to be sixty-five homes on eleven and a half wooded acres off of Probert. We can easily see that the development does not meet the twenty thirty comprehensive land use plan requirements, although it does meet the UDO. So that means that the land use plan has no teeth. It doesn't, it doesn't reflect anything in the UDO. So the UDO needs to be updated per the land use plan. And the plan says it will serve as a strategic guide for land use, infrastructure, and programming decisions for the city and the extraterrestrial jurisdiction. The future land use map and accompanying character area descriptions should be referenced by decision makers, including city staff, planning board, and the city council in rezoning cases and in development proposals. This plan should also serve as a guide to investors and the general public when making, when making land acquisition and development decisions. End quote. So the Burlhaven development plan, sixty-five homes, eleven and a half wooded acres off of Probert Street, is designated a conservation design subdivision with forty percent land preservation per the land use plan. But per the UDO, it doesn't matter. It, nothing is reflected in the UDO regarding the planned use. So the, the, the development can go ahead because the comprehensive land use plan has no teeth. It means nothing. We spent so much money and time, fourteen, what, fourteen months on the plan and a lot of money. And it, it's nothing, it's just, it's out there. And it means nothing. And so also, twenty thirty plan is coming to an end. We're gonna have to, we're gonna have to develop the twenty fifty plan, I think it is. So again, we're gonna spend more money for this pie in the sky. This is how we want to develop.
Thirty seconds.
This is how we want to develop the city of, of, of Brevard, you know, with, with, and preserving land. But if, if the, if the Burlhaven is approved as a traditional neighborhood where the, the land use plan says it's supposed to be conservation, so it means not, so the plan means nothing. And, and that's a real problem, that's a real conflict. Because we've got this pie in the sky, this is what the city.
Hi, Mr. Draper.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next speaker is Hannah Bowers.
My name is Hannah Bowers. I am here on behalf of the Transylvania NAACP to read you a letter. Dear members of city council, we are writing to express our concerns regarding the variance granted for the property located at eighty-five North Lane in the city of Brevard in two thousand twenty-two. As you are aware, a request was made and granted for a variance for the side yard setback requirement of six feet in the GR eight zoning district, reducing it to just two feet. This decision harmed neighboring property owner Charles Garden and we are calling on the city council to adopt new policies to prevent the Board of Adjustment from making similar harmful decisions in the future. The lot at eighty-five North Lane was purchased for seventy-four hundred dollars at a tax auction. A variance was applied for and it was determined that the unnecessary hardship requirement had been met. Six months later, this lot was sold to a builder for seventy thousand dollars, a tenfold increase in value. During the two thousand twenty-five tax reassessment, that sale was used as a comp for other lots in Rosenwald, raising land values and increasing the tax burden on longtime property owners. It must be recognized how such decisions can facilitate gentrification and impact residents in the broader social and economic context. Further, decisions like this call into question the very purpose of property line setbacks, if not to protect adjacent property owners and maintain good relationships between neighbors. Moving forward, the city council should amend the requirements and conditions of variances granted for property line setbacks. The applicant should be required to prove that construction can take place without harm to neighboring properties. And an agreement to mitigate any incidental harm should be a condition of variance. During the hearings, Mr. Garden demonstrated that a smaller home could be built on the site within existing regulations and articulated the potential negative impact on his property value and quality of life if the variance was approved. His fears materialized. He experienced trespassing and is still coping with an ongoing code violation, as well as debris that was left on his property as a result of construction. After several promises to clean it up, the builder ultimately chose to leave the debris and sell the home, relieving himself of responsibility for the building site. The Board of Adjustment prioritized the concerns of a developer rather than a longtime property owner. As indicated by the builder's attempt to buy a one-foot strip of Mr. Garden's property after development, even the developer knew a two-foot lot line was inadequate. This decision has caused a great deal of grief and hardship for those affected. And this council is ultimately responsible for the metrics the Board of Adjustment must use in their decision-making. A strong community can only be built when all its residents are considered, not just those who raise tax values. In closing, this council should affirm the purpose of setbacks as safeguards for all property owners, not obstacles to be waived for financial betterment, and implement additional findings regarding adjacent properties that must be met before a variance is granted in the future. Thank you. That is from the Racial Justice Committee of the NAACP.
All right, our next speaker is Dr. Paula Hartmanstein.
Good evening. I'm Paula Hartmanstein. I live at two forty-nine Pine Mountain Trail in Brevard. My role is that of volunteer task force coordinator for Brevard's age-friendly initiatives. And I'm here to give an update to city council to let you know what, what we're up to. So on June eighteenth, the city received a community challenge grant from AARP that I'm involved in. It's one of only eleven organizations throughout the state that received a grant such as this, okay? And there's thirty-one across the whole country on this particular topic, which is that of community resilience, okay? And I wanted to mention what it, what it's about. It's about disaster preparedness and emotional recovery from the hurricane, okay? The grant requires me to receive personal training from an organization called SBP, which stands for Saint Bernard Parish, which is a nonprofit in upstate New York around since Hurricane Katrina was around. And they provide training to people across the country. And this is the first year AARP has connection with them, okay? Besides that, I have to conduct four community disaster preparedness-type discussions and trainings. I've done two out of four. The next one will be at the big event that Brevard is having on September twenty-seventh, the commemoration of surviving Hurricane Helene. And the last one is in October, and that's a very unique one, I think, my audience is unique. It will be Parkinson's disease caregivers. Because there are some specific, you know, things that caregivers ought to know if they're, not if, when the next disaster strikes. But in addition, and the big, the most challenging part of this grant is that I am co-producing a video. We've already filmed it and now we're in the process of editing it. And it will be to show this model, the name of the, of the video is Ready and Resilient, A Community Model for Preparedness and Emotional Recovery. We hope to have it finished by October. So that's what we're up to. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stein. Our next speaker is Chris Weiner.
Madam Mayor, members of the council. Over the past few years, citizens, business owners, and service providers in Brevard have sounded the alarm about our growing homelessness crisis. We've asked for action, we've offered ideas, and yet the urgency and harm to our community's safety, health, and dignity, the city has failed to implement a coherent, measurable plan. Today, I'm here to challenge that. I've prepared a two-year structured homelessness response plan rooted in compassion, driven by data, and designed for measurable success. It is tailored specifically for Brevard and Transylvania County and works within the limits of North Carolina state law. The plan sets forth a clear north star, reducing unsheltered homelessness by forty to sixty percent within two years, cut first-time homelessness by twenty-five percent, increase exits to permanent housing by fifty percent. It includes a homelessness response steering committee with city, county, nonprofits, law enforcement, and lived, experienced voices at the table. A by-name list and coordinated entry system so that every individual is known and actively case-referenced and case-conferenced. Mobile outreach teams, street medicine, and a low-barrier bridge shelter with recuperative care. Rapid rehousing, landlord incentives, and a targeted eviction prevention. A day service hub, a transitional employment cruise, and apprenticeship pipelines to help people rejoin the workforce. A humane encampment protocol that offers a real alternative before any enforcement. The truth is simple. The city has had years to develop a plan like this. Instead, we've been watching a patchwork of temporary measures, inconsistent enforcement, and no clear metrics for success. The result is that we all see downtown, in our parks and in our neighborhoods, conditions that are neither compassionate nor effective. Our citizens have been patient. They have advocated. They have asked for meaningful change. They have, they have received is delay in inaction. That is not leadership. I'm not here to criticize. I'm here to hand you a ready-to-implement roadmap. The plan is practical, lawful, fundable through a mix of state, federal, and private resources. If we act with urgency, we can not only restore order and public safety, but we can also give our most vulnerable neighbors a real path forward. At this point, I'm submitting to you a printed copy and a digital copy will be emailed to you as well. I urge you to adopt it or at the very least commit to public, transparent process to evaluate and implement its key elements within the next ninety days. Our community deserves better than the status quo. The plan is the first step toward a safer, healthier, and more compassionate Brevard. I look forward to working with you all next year after the elections. Thank you.
Our next, our next speaker is Paige Dinsdale.
Good evening, y'all. My name is Paige Dinsdale and I'm, live at sixty-three Poplar Street in Brevard. So I'm also a senior at Brevard High School. I'm here to propose an idea that would limit pollution in some of our public spaces and parks after seeing lots of trash at a Franklin Park cleanup with one of my clubs. At this cleanup, we spent the majority of our time picking up plastic-based confetti around picnic tables, which led us to want to produce either a, which would aim to eliminate that form of confetti pollution. After this, I spent some more time thinking about how this would actually work and thought about producing my own paper confetti. I've been able to do this with recycled, unused, or used shredded paper or made into sheets and company into confetti. This can be packaged into boxes and bags and serving sizes that families and other groups can use at events and parties. Having confetti in these little packages will be cheap, accessible, and convenient for groups and encourage them to follow the ordinance or suggestion since they won't have to go out of their way for it. This form of confetti would also be easier to pick up. And even if people decide not to pick up their letter, the impact on the surrounding environment and animals will be far less than that of plastics, which will never decompose. So overall, my suggestion is the creation of either an ordinance or letter which would aim to eliminate plastic confetti used in public spaces in the city such as Franklin Park and allow the availability of homemade and store-bought confetti if the demand for that would increase for people to use through an honor system in order to follow the letter and reduce their environmental impact. I handed you earlier a paper which is labeled under like, confetti proposal, which was a little bit more detailed version of the plan, and thank you guys for listening.
Thank you Paige. Our next speaker is Dean Lidle.
First of all, I don't know how I'm supposed to follow that. That was, that was amazing, that was amazing. Good evening, Mayor, council members, fellow residents. My name is Dean Lidle and I live at forty-five Carver Street. And I'm honored to call Brevard home. I recently filed for, to run for city council. I'm here tonight to simply observe and listen as I begin a new chapter of public service. For me, this isn't about politics. It's about legacy. My grandmother, Selena Robinson, dedicated her life to this community. From helping lead efforts to integrating our schools, to advocating for affordable housing, to serving on boards that shape Brevard's health, history, and opportunity. Her example taught me that real change starts right here. With showing up and working together. I'm running because I believe we can do more for working families, for young people searching for purpose, and for neighborhoods that have too often been overlooked. I appreciate the chance to be here and I look forward to learning from all of you in coming weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lidle. Our next speaker is James Veal.
So don't worry, we save the most inarticulate for last. Madam Mayor and the council, I'm James Veal. I live in 627 Bayshore Drive, Pensacola, Florida. I have a house up at Pinnacle Road, 187. I appeared before here last August the 5th to let you know that I'd like to meet with each one of you and talk about a problem of the bottom 200 feet of bracken trail blocking access to six parcels of land up there. Thank you, Mr. Morrow, for meeting with me, and thank you, Ms. Holder, for meeting with me. In the coming weeks, I'll reach out to the rest of you guys to see if you might want to squeeze a few minutes to talk about it. On August 19th, I had the honor to appear before the council at the Mary Jenkins Community Center. And I shared with you that blocking access to the people's property up there is the same as stealing the value of the property. So I'm wondering, did anybody do anything? Has anybody asked anybody to check into it? Does anybody, I mean, like, I also expressed an interest in solving this at the council level, or I might have to go through some other avenues. And I don't want to do that. I, you know, I met with Mr. McKeller a year ago, last November, and expressed an interest in being a good neighbor. But I also let him know that it's easier to be a good neighbor when you have good neighbors. I ended up appearing before the Parking Rights Committee. It got a little exciting. Mr. Hooper, you know, took me under his wing and was going to send me to utilities and public works. That was never scheduled. So, that being said, I look forward to maybe having an in-person dialogue with you guys, and hopefully, we can come up with a solution that restores the value of these people's property, including mine. Thank you very much. Have a nice day.
Thank you, Mr. Veal. Our next speaker is Connie Chase.
I'm Connie Chase, and I live at 149 Old NC 280. And I'm just here as a representative and member of Brevard's Sustainability Council. And I'm excited that you all are considering joining with us and partnering with us. And I think it would be a great thing for our city in that we will work to help with sustainability issues, wastewater issues, with education. And I, you know, we're a whole group of people that are willing to volunteer and work for the city to help with climate change and pollution and all the things that threaten the livability of our, this beautiful area. And I just wanted to say thanks for considering that.
Thank you, Ms. Chase. Our next speaker is Rodney Lux.
Yesterday, I watched ABC. There was a story on called "Hibald: How Disproportionate Property Taxes Are Forcing Some Americans Out of Their Home." The story featured one Baltimore homeowner who was hibald on their property assessments. Since Baltimore is my hometown, I've been just paying the taxes. But I didn't realize that the assessments in the black community were three times what they have been in the white community. And there are 44,000 people in Brevard, most of whom are black, huh? Who are disadvantaged because of property tax assessments. They have shown that it wasn't just in Baltimore. It was in New York, and Philadelphia, and Pennsylvania. And it didn't talk about what happened here in Brevard, because we went through a similar thing. And the essence of the whole story was, as long as you make property taxes your primary place for revenue, as the federal government and state government takes away their revenue from you, you're going to have to depend on property taxes. And the same thing that's happening in other places will happen here. And you're saying, hey, this can't happen, and you were interested. Don't forget, the people who live here are the people who made Brevard what it is. And having the improper property tax assessments are going to force them out. I hope you do something.
Thank you, Mr. Lux. Our next speaker is Harvey Sankey.
From Philadelphia, I can say you're right, Roddy. My name is Harvey Sankey. I live at 51 Lake House Trail in Brevard. Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council Members. The resolution endorsing the Brevard Sustainability Council by the mayor should be rejected by the city council. That is one of the, one of the four actions that the mayor has asked for. The city council at this time does not have enough information to get all of the facts, such as, who are these individuals, and why are they needed to tell the city how to improve our quality of life? Are they part of an NGO, and will they get paid by an outside source? What policies are they going to follow? Is it from UN Agenda 21 or UN Agenda 30? This will lead to more regulations and involve city strategy, strategic planning and investments, tax dollars. They will ask for the city to commit to creating a climate action plan and to perform an energy audit of its operations. This will involve spending our tax dollars. What's more important to the city? Infrastructure, safety, affordable housing, or homelessness? Sustainability development was not our top priority during the budget negotiations. Red flag: some city's support to the work of the BCS, but without applying significant city resources, money, or staff time to the pursuit. Sorry, it's going to cost you money. However, any significant commitment of city resources would need to be approved by the council on a case-by-case basis. Once again, they're going to come up and ask for money. No city financial resources will be applied to BCS activities without additional council approval. Minimal staff time, for example, the city's communications coordinator posting a BCS message online will be applied. There's going to be more than that, folks. This is nothing but getting the camel's head under the tent. The camel will eventually be under our tent, and we will be paying our tax dollars for a new person to implement the plans in the future. It's going to cost us money, folks. If only, if only, if any type of improving our quality of life is needed, the Planning Department, Downtown Planning Committee, and Public Works can do the job.
Mr. Sankey, you're out of time.
You didn't give me the 30-second warning, did you?
I did. You just weren't listening.
Give it to the Planning Committee, okay? Let them decide.
Mr. Sankey, you're out of time. Thank you very much. Please sit down. Please sit down. All right. Now, we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which are our public hearings. Our first public hearing is a proposed amendment to the city of Brevard traffic schedule: no parking on Railroad Avenue and Galloway Street. And I believe this is going to be presented by Chief Jordan. Folks, we're still in session! Mr. Sankey, please sit down, or please take your conversation outside. We are in session, please. A courtesy to everybody. All right, moving on. Chief?
Hi. I'll be succinct. This is, this ordinance proposal came about close to when we were having issues at the White Squirrel Festival. We had several complaints from constituents of excessive parking on the Galloway. Let me just make sure. I always confuse that with Gallimore. It's Galloway Street, which is right off West Main Street. During the White Squirrel Festival, we had people parked on both sides. What this did was created a traffic hazard for emergency vehicles. Our fire trucks, our ambulances, our police couldn't get by, but there's nothing posted on the street to say, no parking on one side of the street or the other. So it effectively really clogged it up bad. So this was one of those things that you don't think about until something bad happens, and then we wouldn't want anything to happen, anybody lost a life, because our first responders couldn't get somewhere. So this is being proposed, no parking signs on Galloway Street, but right around the same time, we start getting a number of complaints off of Railroad Avenue, too. People parking on the side of Railroad Avenue closer, past the depot closer to Whitmire, and it was clogging the street likewise, where emergency vehicles, especially fire trucks, were having difficulty getting down the road on certain days. So nothing had been posted there. So now, the proposal is to have the no parking signs on Railroad Avenue all the way down to keep that street clear, the same as with Galloway. So there's no fiscal impact. It's minimal. It's the cost of signs imposed, and respectfully submitted for your consideration.
All right. This is a public hearing, and so we will now move in to hear from the public on this topic. The public is asked to adhere to the following guidelines for a public hearing. Register with the city clerk by printing your name, address, and phone number. When it is your turn, step to the podium in front of city council. State your name and address clearly. Be concise, avoid repetition, and limit your comments to five minutes or less. Yes, in a public hearing, you get five minutes. I will, like during public comment, tell you when you have 30 seconds left. Be concise, oh, I said that. Direct comments to the full council, not to an individual council member or to staff. This is a time to provide your comments, but not to ask questions. A public hearing is not an appropriate venue for a question-and-answer session. Designate a spokesperson for large groups, and each person may speak once for a specific public hearing. Our first speaker is Lisa Radke.
Open the public hearing.
Oh, wait. Correction, city clerk, thank you. I need a motion to officially open the public hearing.
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is now officially open. Lisa Radke.
Hi, I'm Lisa Radke, and I live at 420 Whitmire Street, Brevard, 287, I mean, yeah. You all know the zip code. My phone number is 828-384-9063. I didn't come here to speak today, but when I saw Railroad Avenue parking on there, oh, please don't take away parking on Railroad Avenue. I was thrilled when the new owners of the property on Railroad and Whitmire opened an espresso, coffee, and ice cream stand in an airstream Silver Bullet trailer. They added children's playground equipment and picnic tables, and it is a super-popular place for young families to enjoy a coffee while relaxing, watching their kids have great fun. I've never seen so many young families have a place that they can relax and enjoy. Then the owners had a lovely Christmas market with live music, enabling local entrepreneurs and first-time, encouraging first-time entrepreneurs to sell unique gifts. In April, they started a trailside market on Thursday afternoons that includes many local farmers, organic eggs at a reasonable price, and not early on Saturday morning. It's Thursday afternoon. It's easy for part-time farmers or after-work people to come, and wonderful food vendors, just entrepreneurs, just low-budget tamales, cheap, wonderful dinner. Now, so a lot of the farmers, Gaia Herbs, and some businesses have, local businesses have little stands there. Now, most Thursdays, it is so popular that the Railroad Depot parking is absolutely full. I do understand that the current parallel parking is a bit chaotic. Now, the owners have boulders set up to delineate the border of where the parking is. And actually, I am sure, I mean, they're fantastic people. I am sure they would be willing to move the boulders farther away from Railroad and put in gravel for parallel, I mean, for diagonal parking. And that would avoid the in and out and back and forth and trying to avoid hitting the boulders when you're parking. And that would provide more space and have the parking stop before it's close to the bend in the road to go over the creek. So I'm sure that these wonderful owners that have provided an opportunity to raise sales taxes and new business starters. So I want to thank you, and please do not, oh, Galloway, I totally understand, but Railroad, please do not. Plus, the music venue at King Street is such a wonderful moneymaker community center and everything, and that would be definitely paralyzed if parking on Railroad were taken away. So please do not take away parking on Railroad. Make it a little bit less chaotic, but please, we need that. And people used to park on the, on the other side also where the walking trail, the multi-use trail, is. So that has been taken away, but the other side has been painted. We do need more crosswalks there, but please, do not take away railroad parking. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Radke. Our next speaker is Chris Weiner.
My name is Chris Weiner. I think I forgot to give you my address last time. It's 503 South Broad Street. So one of the things that I would remind the city council more broadly is that we actually need more parking, not less parking. I think that's a well-understood issue. Anybody that operates any reasonable-sized agricultural vehicle like I do, even a little 1,500 ram, barely fits in any of the parking spaces in town, and God forbid I try to bring my duly into town, there's two parking spaces that are actually large enough for me to park in. But, that being said, what you all may not know is that once upon a time, I used to work for the United States Army Corps of Engineers, and one of the things that we did was build roads, bridges, dams, and all kinds of port facilities. Now, parking is a relatively inf- Now, parking is a relatively simple problem to solve if you take example of Europe, which implements one-way systems. What I would propose is that Galloway, Oaklawn, and England Street be made one-way streets with parking designated on one side of the road and potentially even made as diagonal parking. Further, if you go down the road on Avenue, there is about 300 feet at the top of the road that would amply create diagonal parking on the left side between the road and the pathway. The same studies should be conducted within the rest of the city of Brevard. The two roads that are in town, Jordan and, I can't remember the name of it right now, need to be reversed. Now, the reason for that is, the idea behind one-way streets integrating with two-way streets or other one-way streets is that when you get to the junction, you don't have to cross traffic to turn. Both of those streets require you to cross traffic to turn off of that street. You cannot turn right, which is a natural turn right on red, from either of those streets, and maneuver in a loop. So I would ask the city to decide not to take this action forward and instead take on a relatively easy traffic survey analysis, which I'm happy to provide free consulting service to the city to outline methods to improve both the traffic flow within the city and how to regain some of the parking spaces that we lost. Thank you for your time, and I will submit my plan for Galloway, Oaklawn, and England Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weiner. All right, that is everybody that signed up to speak. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. I will now open it for questions or comments from council about the topic, and we'll start with Mr. Wise.
I don't have any comments. I want to, now that we've heard from the public, I want to kind of think about this a little more deeply.
Which is the role of a public hearing.
Exactly the role of it. Ms. Holder.
I agree with Lauren to think more on that, and I have driven through the railroad area when the market is taking place, and it's a very popular place, and so to take away the parking spaces that are there would definitely impact. So I would like to get more information, other options, if that's what we have to do, and look at how we can address this in a positive way.
Mr. Morrow.
Yeah, and just to clarify, we're really not talking about taking the established parking spaces on Railroad Avenue away, so, just to clarify that.
So, give me clarity.
Well, we added several parking places between King Street and Whitmire.
Right.
A few months ago, and those stay. We took out a right-turn lane and added parking there. So we actually added parking on there, so.
So, the proposal would basically put a no parking sign, people are parking where, they're not supposed to park now anyways, they're not parking spaces, and this would add a no parking sign, so it's clear that that side of the road was no parking. The parking on the other side remains, and that was really a safety issue because our safety vehicles couldn't traverse through, it was so narrow. So, but, but we're not actually removing any parking spaces. All the parking spaces remain.
That we're at.
Right, and just so you know, it's from Whitmire to McLean.
Okay.
That, it needs to be no parking, or that's where we're talking about doing it. Not, not the other way up to Probar, it's from Whitmire down to McLean.
Right.
Past the depot. Sorry about that.
Just to clarify, our proposal would add no parking signs to this section beside the path between King and Railroad, but not for safety reasons, just because we want to preserve the path, and we've had some folks parking on the path, obstructing folks' clear use of the path, but that is voluntary, that's not for safety.
Mr. Daniel.
Well, I live on Whitmire Street as well, and I really also love that little area that's there. However, driving on Railroad Avenue on Thursday when that line of cars is parked half out in the street is a little disconcerting, and I feel, I would agree that it is a safety issue. And I will relate another little story of pulling up behind a fellow that had stopped at the stop sign there on Whitmire Street in front of the little barber shop, getting out of his car, going in to get his haircut. Left his car at the stop sign. So there's a little bit of free-range parking going on in that area, and I do, I do think the owner has opportunity to create parking along the street there if that's allowed, but on their property, not in the street, because they are parking in the street. Not completely in the street, they're, you know, they've got two wheels in the street. So I would agree that that needs to be addressed. I think that one of the things that we are trying to do with our trail is beautify it, and having cars parked in the street along the trail is not the look that I'm going for, so. And I think it could be organized by the owner to have their own parking on their property, not in the street, so.
Thank you, Mr. Daniel. Mr. Baker.
Yeah, I want to first just thank staff for working quickly to address this issue and get it before us. I will echo what a member of the public said earlier about crosswalks on Railroad, really down the length of Railroad. There's a lot more activity in this area, which is great. I think the multi-use trail is a big reason for that, and we need to make sure people can move around safely when they're not in a car. I did wonder if, because I remember this coming up a month or so ago at the Public Safety Committee, and back then, it seemed that we were considering just one side of Railroad to be no parking, and I wonder if that would suffice for keeping the roadway clear.
Are you talking between Whitmire and McLean?
I think at the time, we were actually talking about the upper, so from Probar to Whitmire.
I know that had come up, but that was not part of
Right.
this discussion. The main discussion was from Whitmire down to McLean, and that's where we were getting the safety concerns. And it's, it's just about the safety, it's...
And even, I mean, from, okay, we're just talking about from Whitmire to McLean.
Yeah.
Even if there was parking on one side but not on the other side, that would not be enough room?
It wouldn't really be enough room, no. And where, where I think you're thinking about, when we're talking from up to Probar, we're talking about it as a traffic calming measure of
Right.
narrowing it down with parking on one side.
Right.
Slowed down traffic. I think that's where that discussion was, but this was kind of separate from that.
Okay. I think it was also going to be on the, not on the trail side of the road, but on the, where the homes are, yeah. Okay, those are all my questions at this time.
Mayor, I have one comment to make. So as the Airstream property develops, depending on what the owners propose to develop there, it might require the addition of some off-street parking. And our position is that the types of uses that are ongoing there now, because of their intensity and because of the number of people that they draw, when they make substantial improvements to that property, they're going to need to build some additional off-street parking there, and so in the long run, there will probably be additional parking there. It'll just be on the property itself.
All right. Any other comments from council? All right, we will move on to our next public hearing.
You've got to close this one.
We did, we did.
We did. I closed it before we started the conversation. I do get it right now and then. All right. All right, our second public hearing is the Proposed Amendments to the City of Brevard Unified Development Ordinance, multiple chapters, specificity on general residential and residential mixed-use districts.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So if you will remember, back in August, I mean, April, city council adopted two new definitions into the Unified Development Ordinance in response to Session Law 2024-57, and the two new definitions codified were new construction and residential zoning district. So this is a staff-initiated text amendment to clarify various requirements throughout the UDO that hinge on the term residential zoning district, and until you adopted this definition, relied on a former interpretation we were making of that term. When it did not have a codified definition, it was standard practice to interpret residential zoning districts as general residential and residential mixed use, the two districts with residential in the name. But however, and that was one of the options we provided you back in April. But the definition that was chosen changes this, and so we are going to, just to remind you, the new definition now reads, "Any zoning district that permits residential land uses", and that includes many more districts besides just general residential and residential mixed use. So this amendment replaces any instance of the vague residential land use or non-residential land uses or districts. Different phrases like that peppered throughout the ordinance replaces those phrases with explicit lists of applicable zoning districts. So no actual standards of the UDO are being amended, it's just taking that vague phrase and adding in a specific list of districts. Planning Board discussed these amendments at their July 22 meeting and unanimously recommended in favor as written, and in accordance with the general statutes, they also submit the written statement of consistency. And because the amendments make no changes to the actual regulations and only seek to codify interpretations that have always been made, we are requesting that you take action tonight to avoid any complications or conflicts with applicants. The way things read right now, it does sort of change how we're able to or unable to permit things that have traditionally been permitted. So you have all the amendments in your packet, it looks like a lot, but it's just because it touches all the different chapters, and it's really not that many, again, no substantive changes, but I'm happy to go over any of them that you have questions about.
All right, this is a public hearing, so we will officially open the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The hearing is open. No one signed up to comment at the public hearing, therefore, we will close the public hearing. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is now closed. All right. Council, as you heard, Mr. Blad, they are asking for action on this public hearing tonight. Usually, we do not act on a public hearing the same night, but as this one was administrative, they are asking for approval of the ordinance amending the chapters in the UDO. Do I have a motion to approve the ordinance?
I move, we approve the ordinance as written.
I have a second.
Second.
All right, we will open it for discussion. Mr. Morrow.
I thank the staff again for initiating our needed changes to our ordinances, thank you.
We will go down, Mr. Baker.
I have no comments.
Mr. Daniel.
I would agree with Ms. Morrow, reading the changes that were made, it's obvious that they needed to be made, so, thank you.
Ms. Holder.
No comment.
Mr. Wise.
I appreciate the work of the planning department and planning board for getting this done and getting some clarification, thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the table. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes, the ordinance is approved.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to our consent and information agenda. The following items are on the consent agenda. One, the tax settlement report of June 2025. Two, capital project amendment, wastewater treatment plant, KCI, $878,000. Three, budget amendment, bucket truck, $150,000 debt-financed. Four, establishing Norton Creek Stream Bank Restoration Capital Project, Cashers Valley Road to Rosman Highway. Five, city council finance, human resources, and citizens appointment committee meeting minutes, April 28, 2025. Number six has been moved down to new business. Seven, city council public works and utilities committee meeting minutes, May 7, 2025. Eight, city council housing committee meeting minutes, May 13, 2025. Nine, city council parks, trails, and recreation committee meeting minutes, May 21, 2025. Ten, city council public safety committee meeting minutes, May 27, 2025. Eleven, city council finance, human resources, and citizen appointment committee meeting minutes, May 28, 2025. And twelve, correspondence, ABC Board meeting minutes of May 22, and the ABC Board meeting minutes of June 26, 2025. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right, consent agenda is approved. All right, I think we have been going for an hour and a half. We will take a short, five-minute break, and then we'll resume. So five-minute break, everybody. Okay, take me off of mute. All right, we are now, I'll say it again for everyone out there watching. We are now moving on to unfinished business, to the proposed amendment to the official zoning map of the city of Brevard, the Pisgah Gateway District. Mr. Bland.
Yes, thank you. So back in June, late June 16 meeting, you held a public hearing to consider reinstating the Pisgah Gateway Mixed Use District, or PGX, which would rezone much of the area around the US 276, US 64, NC 280 intersection at the entrance to the national forest. Your original enactment of this district in 2024 was nullified by state law, Session Law 2024-57. And so we initiated a rezoning to reapply the PGX district this year in the same geographic area it was previously applied to. However, another, a change in state law 2024-57 also removed an exemption for the limits of downzoning, basically saying that downzoning is allowed if it's initiated by the local government. That exception was removed. But there's now a bill working its way through the General Assembly, Senate Bill 587, that would add that exception back. It also would make some pretty major changes to the regulation of nonconformities and vested rights. So due to the uncertainty of this pending legislation, we are requesting that you table the PGX matter to wait for the results of Senate Bill 587. It didn't cross over. It's in the House in a committee right now. And so we're waiting to see what happens with that. Passage of the bill would also necessitate text amendments to the UDO relating to vested rights and nonconformities. So we feel it is prudent at this point to wait to see how the statutes change before moving forward with this rezoning. So that's our request at this time.
We, go ahead. I was just going to follow up because I, I've been trying to follow this pretty closely down in the, down at the legislature, especially in light, you may recall our public hearing we had at the last meeting, which was a long time ago. Several of these issues were brought up by Mr. Kitchen, who is a, the father of a lady who owns some property out there, but is also a professional land municipal attorney for about 40 years for various communities around the state of North Carolina. So he and I have had several talks. We've called some people down in Raleigh, and the Senate bill passed 47 to nothing. It was not controversial. It was not, it seems like the Senate at least recognized that it was, had made an error. So there's a real good chance that it will pass through and it's gone over to the House. It is in a House committee right now. Of course, the session has ended. The, the General Assembly seems to be spending most of their time trying to override gubernatorial vetoes right now. But we expect them to, to, to come back at some point. And given the 47 to nothing vote in the Senate, and the easy passage over, it just seems like it's a matter of time. And rather than run an inordinate risk moving forward with implementing this and potentially acquiring complications and problems and lawsuits, it might be more prudent to table this matter till after we find out what's going to happen with that bill and it gets passed. And so that is, that is what Mr. Bland and I are asking you to consider this evening.
Counsel, do I have a motion to table this matter?
So moved.
I have a second. We'll open it for any questions or discussion. Mr. Daniel.
Again, I will defer to advice of counsel and our staff as well.
Mr. Baker.
Yeah, I'll, I'll also defer, although I'll also say that I think trying to predict what Raleigh's going to do is a very dangerous game sometimes. So I, I'll be interested to see, you know, what happens down there. And I think we should continue following it because if they do, you know, sometimes those bills just sort of die in committee and you actually never hear whether they're, whether they've actually died or not. They just sit there on the docket and never get moved. So I'm a little concerned that we'll, we'll never really have any resolution. So I guess I would just ask that we, you know, stay updated on it and maybe revisit this if, if we feel like a period of time has passed and it's not moving anywhere.
I, I have registered for the Legislative Resource Services, and I'm sure Wilson has too. And this is one of the bills that I have on my tracking service. And so I look at it once a week just to see where it sits. And it's not moving as fast as I would have hoped it would, but I intend on doing that into the, into the fall. My thinking is if we don't have a good idea that this is going away and we're ready to do this PGX, by the time the, they're really fixing that roundabout, that's when we need to come back and reconsider this. That's kind of what's in my head. I don't know if it's what's in yours, but that's kind of my thinking.
Those are all my questions.
Mr. Morrow.
Appreciate our, our attorney's advice.
Ms. Holder.
I don't have any questions. Thank you for the work and the advice.
Mr. Wise.
I have a question, a smarkey comment. I would love to know, I know we can't find out, how much local time, money, effort, resources, stress, anxiety has gone into this piggyback rider that appeared on a Helene relief bill that we have now been dealing with for, I don't know, how many months, eight months?
Yes.
We move forward to take a step back, and it just shows you just how inefficient, let me rephrase it, it shows you how efficient local government can be because we can make decisions, whereas at the state, this thing is going around in circles and we have to deal with it and try to fix it here at the local level. So just remember that, pay attention to what your state lawmakers are doing too, because it's causing us and therefore you guys, all sorts of anxiety. Thank you.
All right.
Sorry, I had to get on my horse.
Okay. You have a motion and a second on the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, this item is tabled.
Thank you.
All right, we will now move on to our new business now. All right, new business. Our first item is a resolution regarding the Brevard Sustainability Council. I believe our city manager is going to open the discussion.
Did we move the consent item? That was.
That's number four.
Okay, all right.
I moved it to.
Pardon me, I'm passing out the sheet for that a little early then.
Is this for, what's this?
Oh, this is for item four.
That's item four. No, no, no. That's not that yet.
All right. Apologies. Yes, ma'am. So the Brevard Sustainability Council has appeared before you a number of times, asking us to adopt sustainability and environmental matters as a priority. We didn't do that last time. The council chose other priorities to focus our time and resources on, but the Brevard Sustainability Council has approached the mayor and I with what I'm calling a compromise approach, a way to advance these interests, which I think a number of you all agree with, without taxing the city's staff and monetary resources too much. And so that's what's before you tonight. And Mayor Koploff actually helped sort of come up with this compromise. And so I ask you, mayor, to explain a little bit more what is in this proposal.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Yes, we've made it very clear to the council that, you know, we don't have the money. And as much as we all believe in sustainability, and as much as it is actually in almost every single one of our planning documents, we just don't have the ability to commit funding or manpower. But this is a high-interest item. And when you look at things like our comprehensive land use plan, you know, it talks about incorporating climate resiliency into city strategic planning and investments. It talks about, you know, restoration of, of native ecosystems, of creating a resilient infrastructure and services. So sustainability, although it wasn't high enough in a priority to get its separate funding, we looked at what could we do if we didn't have money from the city and we didn't have any staff working on it? And what we have, and one of the great things about our community, is we have active, engaged community members who are willing to donate their time and effort and their expertise. And I'm happy to say that the qualifications of some of these people are absolutely astounding. We have a PhD in, I believe, environmental studies. We've got another person with a master's in that. And we are also in the wonderful position of being able to call on resources from various educational institutions in the area. So not everyone on the council has to be an environmental engineer or expert. But what we sort of sought was that they could look at ways that our community could become more sustainable and work with the community in terms of a lot of education. And one of the examples of how we have done this successfully is our age-friendly group, where I think a year and a half ago, you know, we said we really wanted to do age-friendly, but we had no money and no staff. So we created a community group led by Dr. Hartman Stein, who's sitting right there, that has cost us no money. In fact, she brought in $3,000 of grants this year, writing them up herself, no staff writing, and no match. And she has executed the grants, but it allows us to do those wonderful type projects about disaster preparedness. So they would look for grants that might be available. They would research what other towns are doing. What is Asheville doing? There's some interesting community projects that Asheville is doing. And so what they are looking for is really this resolution, which, when you read it, all it does is it says that we endorse the creation and operation of that council and that we are willing to help promote things as government speech by putting things on our website, on our Facebook page, by having the mayor go out and promote it. And, and so the, the very minimal amount of staff effort would be asking our communications director to post things, as she does now for the age-friendly. I believe that's probably the only age-friendly task that has, that we have actually asked for staff support on. We are not looking to develop a plan. We are not asking to do that. So we are asking to endorse this idea, utilize this community effort. And I volunteered to be the liaison between the group and the elected body. And when there are projects that the group is doing, we would take it back, you know, to probably the appropriate committee for evaluation, especially if it's something that the city was going to be promoting. So this is a win-win. It's a way to do something that is very important. And we look even more ever since Hurricane Helene. Sustainability is so important, sustainability and resilience. And how do we do that? And how do we do that in a fiscally constrained environment? How do we do that when our people are already overworked? We do it by bringing in and utilizing these incredible volunteers in this organization with guidance from the elected body through my attending their monthly meetings. And we start getting our community focused on this as an area, our businesses focused on this. There's so much potential. So when you look at the resolution, that's what it's saying. It's really not asking for a lot. It's not asking for any money, any staff time. So with that, I am going to ask if there is a motion to approve the resolution.
I move we approve the resolution as written.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All right, we will open it for discussion. Mr. Morrow.
You know, as chair of the Utilities Public Works Committee, I think sustainability is all about that. And, and we just learned recently how it takes a team of organizations to, to deal with huge storms. That who would ever thought we would be in that situation? And it took it, folks that came from all over. And we are still learning what we should have, could have, would have done. And so any, any opportunity to leverage the expertise that's in our community, we have the volunteer army that we have that supports our projects are amazing and I'm personally very appreciative for that.
Ms. Holder.
I'm excited and supportive, especially since it does not involve staff time and it does not involve money from our budget. And so I would like to look forward to more reports as they come forth and as it moves forward, just like we get them from Dr. Hartman Stein. And so to keep us posted about how it's going and commend you, mayor, but, you know, in, in taking this as a volunteer effort to be the liaison for us. And that's my only concern, your time. But if you, you know your time and so you have the time to do it.
I'm happy to give my time. This is an item dear to my heart.
Mm-hmm. So we appreciate that. So in full support.
Thank you. Mr. Wise.
Yeah, I volunteered to be on our age-friendly task force. And I had, honestly, had a little concern about how that would take shape, whether it really would not task our finances or, or city staff. And I think that we have been, not only successful in not doing that, we have been successful in, in creating money and bringing grants into the community, completely led by engaged citizens. And I think that's the key part of this, is that this is being organized and was brought to us by citizens who want to contribute. And yes, I think we need to make sure we don't over And yes, I think we need to make sure we don't overstep the lines and understanding of that agreement, but I think also it's a fantastic resource in our community, so I'm excited to see this move forward.
Mr. Baker.
Sure. I'm gonna do something a little dangerous in these times and ask us to hold two ideas in our mind at the same time. I know we're all challenged by that, me especially. And I've been one of the ones up here for the past four years that beats my chest and really tries to keep the city focused on our priorities. And it's because we are... we are a small city. We're a great city, but we are small, our resources are limited. And when, in the past, it was part of the... one of the reasons I ran originally was that I was seeing sort of mission creep happen at the city, and we were very reactive and bouncing all over the place, and it meant that we weren't as efficient in getting things done as I felt like we should be. But, hold that in your mind. Now, on the other hand, one of the first things I learned about Brevard when I came to Brevard College, and I was shocked at the quality of the professors that I had there. At the time, it was a college of 600 kids, and the caliber of professors that we had was just amazing, and it was because people wanted to live in Brevard. And that, the same thing goes for the people that decide to move here and live here. We have incredibly gifted people who are either retired or still working, who have chosen to live in Brevard because this place is so special, but they have all of these talents that really the city would be silly and negligent not to take advantage of. So, those are the two things I'm trying to hold in my head at the same time, and I feel like this plan really does a good job of laying that out. Any proposal for additional staff time or, you know, money would have to come before this council, and we are perfectly capable of voting things down if we don't feel like we have the money. We've done it before. But that being said, when there are citizens who are eager to contribute, I think we should do what we can within reason to support them, and that in turn can support some of our big priorities that we've had, that we've named over the last year or so. And so, I'm in support of this. We're gonna remain vigilant, and I will remain vigilant to make sure that we don't see any mission creep or, you know, staff time being dragged away or money being spent that we haven't approved, but I trust our staff and how this plan is laid out that we won't see that, so, happy to see it.
Mr. Daniel.
Yeah, I'm very much in favor of sustainability, my wife, and she keeps me on track with that, and we work really hard in our personal life on this. However, I have a problem procedurally with this. If we approve this agreement, you have to read the actual resolution rather than the introduction as to what this is gonna do. And if we vote this in, we would be voting to allow someone, not the council, to speak for us without knowing who that someone is or what they will say. We would be authorizing the council that we don't know who the members are, we don't have the minutes to their meetings, that we as a council have not given any express charge to then represent the city and council without our oversight. Considering mission drift and also Mr. Stanky's comments that, you know, at the budget retreat, we said that we couldn't proceed with this. But, we did accept the offer of this committee or this group to... their advice for the city, without a resolution, which kind of, you know, the mayor's description of this resolution sort of makes it like it doesn't mean much. In that case, I think it demeans the process that we're here to uphold and governance that we're sworn to protect. Yes, it is, it's kind of a death by a thousand cuts, is sort of what I'll think about it. This is, you know, we keep a little bit here, a little bit there, this isn't gonna do much, you know, this isn't gonna do much, and you just keep doing that, which is what we seem to have a pattern of being in, that, you know, eventually it adds up. I feel like that the city is already, as has been stated, as part of our mission, is already something that our staff is doing. This is a resolution that creates a committee that, well, we don't have any oversight of. I think that's a mistake. I do think that the intentions are good, but one of the... one thing that I learned a long time ago is that the road to hell is paved with good intentions. And you can have good intentions of what we're trying to do, but the unintended consequences of this, I feel like are... I don't get this, you know, why we would be doing something, codifying something that we're already doing, and then we're basically just kind of turning it loose. So, I'm not in favor of this. For that reason, not for the intent, but for the process, I think this is wrong, so...
All right, we have a motion and a second on the table? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
It's four ayes, one no. The resolution passes. All right, moving on to our next item of new business. All right. It is the potential amendment to the roundabout design contract and the bear statue proposal. And that will be introduced by the city manager.
Yes ma'am, so, I'll make some remarks teeing this item up, and then I'll throw to Paul for a little bit more explanation of the contract that I'm gonna allude to, and then to you mayor, who will introduce some guests who are gonna pitch the new proposal to us. So, essentially, staff are using an opportunity that was gonna come up anyway to take your temperature on a proposed amendment to our roundabout landscaping and art plan. The council already approved a landscaping and art plan for R-5799 and the existing Acusta Road Roundabout a few years ago. And we have been saving money for that, little by little, year after year. We've been doing staff work on that, and we've essentially been prepping to execute that art plan. And we've arrived at a point in that plan where we need to hire a firm, and we'd like to hire our chosen traffic firm, McAdams, to negotiate the encroachment agreements with the state for these landscape roundabouts and public art fixtures. And the reason why we need a firm to do that is because that's a very complicated and technical process, believe it or not, injected with a little bit of art criticism, because not only does NCDOT make sure that any art you install is installed soundly and safely, and in a way that doesn't obstruct traffic, but they also review the art itself. And so, it's got a little bit of the technical and the subjective in there as well, and we need some folks with expertise to help us navigate that. And so, we were gonna do that anyway for the landscaping and the Acusta Road Roundabout with the digester that we'd like to see. And also, I forgot to say, the proposed arch at the gateway of Pisgah Forest. And so, we've actually got an opportunity at this moment to tweak the plan, if we'd like to, and it sounds like there is a group of art advocates in our community who have a proposal to tweak the plan. And so, what I'm asking you all to do today is tell me whether you wanna pursue this pivot, and if so, we will ask McAdams, when they do the rest of the workforce, to do a little bit more work to evaluate exactly what it would take to change the plan to accommodate this new proposal. And so, I'm not asking you to approve the installation of the bear statue today. In fact, I'd ask you to reserve judgment on that, because we don't know the cost, we don't know the time, we don't know if it would even be feasible according to the state's standards or not. I'm just asking you if you wanna find out more. So, that's all I'm really hoping to get from you all today. But I'll ask Paul to step up and explain a little bit more about exactly what services McAdams is gonna provide for us for our pre-approved art, but also for this new proposal.
Right. Teresa Buck Walter with McAdams. She would serve as our landscaping, our landscape quality control expert, much like she did at the other roundabout with the landscaping in it. She would respond to NCDOT inquiries during landscape installation, conduct site visits to verify material placement matches, the approved plans, test the soil quality, examine the plantings, boulders, and custom elements before they're installed. So, she would be our boots-on-the-ground expert on the accoutrements that are going into the landscaping plan.
Okay, well, as we get ready for the roundabouts and, you know, what we're gonna do in the center room, I was approached by several community members, Anne Degara, one of them, with the opportunity of, wouldn't it be great if we put some art in there? An art that, not just any art, but art that really was representative of the forest, representative of Brevard. And so, Anne brought up the idea, knowing of course that we have no money for any art, and so, we're not looking at any additional money for the art, but Anne proposed getting community donations and developing a plan that would incorporate a statue of a bear at the roundabout that goes into the forest. And of course, the forest is well-known for its bears, and so, it would be... and this is a very conceptual, okay? The bear is not gigantic.
Not big enough.
No, no. Don't get misled. We're looking at a bear that would be about 10 feet long and 10 feet high.
Seven and a half.
Seven and a half feet high. And it would be incorporated, you know, in the roundabout with, you know, what we had in the original design, it was just trees.
Well, it was a forest.
And it was a forest, it was trees.
All forest.
That is what a forest has, trees. And we had some boulders, and we had, I think, some, like, boulders or steps or stone steps leading up to the forest type thing. So, part of this would be incorporating the bear into the overall roundabout. It would involve taking part of the forest out so that we wouldn't have so much forest. One side of this would have the bear, and, you know, then... this is what Teresa would be looking at. Now, we did have an initial discussion with NCDOT because we wanted to find out if it's even feasible. Now, this is not, you know, their approval, there was no in-depth discussion, this was the city manager and I talked with three or four of their folks during our regular quarterly meeting, and they were not opposed to the idea. They did say that we would have to meet all of their stringent safety, you know, line of sight, you know, requirements, but places all over the country have statues in their roundabouts. We're about to put a digester in our other roundabout. So, it's workable, but all those details with NCDOT has to be, have to be met. And so, at this point, I wanna turn it over to Anne, and I wanna introduce Charles Calvin. Did I get that right? Charles is the proposed artist that would be doing the bear, and Anne has a new drawing of the bear that I think you wanna show everybody, right? And over to the microphone, I'm turning it over to you for more details.
I tried to do the drawing today as large as this sculpture would be.
Oh my gosh.
Charles Calvin, I first saw his sculpture at the Rogaus farm. The Rogaus have been very active in our community. Jacqueline Rogau came here just like me, I'm a Whitmire, that spent summers here, and so she's been very generous with the community. For over 20 years, Tom and I have raised money for every sculpture, all the 25 that are in the town. The city did not buy them, we gave them to the city, and they maintain them. And this one, our mayor told me, we just don't have funding, and I said, well, I'll get it. And I did. And Charles... I'll first show you the size of the bear, which would be seven and a half feet high. And one of the reas... the ideas I got for this was, I own Redwood Gallery, tourists come in all the time. How do you get to Looking Glass Falls? Where is Pisgah National Forest? Well, you go to the bear from Brevard and you turn left. And from Asheville, you go to the bear. Charles, let's turn around.
Turn it around so everyone can see it, yeah.
So, from Asheville, you go to the bear, which will be in the roundabout, and you bear to the left. I mean, right.
Right.
And the bear, if you've seen, Charles Calvin was a fabricator for NASCAR, so he knows how to bend steel.
Really?
And this will be made of steel. And he has done incredible things that I saw at the Rogaus. I'll take it, I'll give it back to the city council. No, I'm gonna be stretched out. And this was the biggest paper I get to do today. When I came back here in 1998, Tom and I, he had been in Texas 38 years, he's Dr. Jerry Kay's brother that lived here many years, and grew up here. And I was in Atlanta, but showed my work in Santa Fe, New Mexico, which has 260 galleries in a town the size of Asheville. Their whole economy is built on that. So, I decided to research on the computer what the arts do for the economy of a town. Are paper mills closed? Dupont closed? What was Brevard gonna do but depend on tourism? Well, the national forest is the main tourist attraction besides the Brevard Music Center. So, Tom and I thought, what can we do that will complement the music center when we started the sculpture project? I had found like five other artists here who did sculpture, but they were making fireplace screens and gates for property and not doing sculpture. And so, I asked them, I took a drawing of a wolf to them and said, would you make this wolf? And let me put it in front of the gallery, and let's get a reaction. Well, on the studies on the computer, it showed that when you build the arts in a community, you increase the economy, it attracts, attracts the cultural tourist, and the cultural tourist spends on average $400 to $500 more a day in an area than the regular tourist.
Wow.
So we thought, that's going to help. And people would come in the gallery and say, you know, we used to drive by, go through Brevard, to our house in Cassers and Lake Glenville and Highlands. We never stopped, but we saw that elk on the corner. And that was one of the first sculptures besides the wolf. The elk went in. And it made us stop. And so the sculpture project was a success. The money for all of them, Tom and I would just ask people. And Tom had worked for Charlie Picklestein, who owned the phone company. He says, let's go see Charlie. And Charlie says, sure, I'll give money for that. That's a great thing. And he showed all the donations that he gave to people and to projects in this community. And there are many people like that. I asked two people for money to do this. And they gave it to me. The National Forest are in trouble now. And we can't lose that tourist attraction. It's very important to this community. And so the bear being there, the bears are worshiped here. We love them. I went from a very serious abstract painter to painting bears. And I love them. They come to my house. And in the world today, to be able to see that with all the stuff going on in the world, it's like a miracle to see an animal like that roaming around safely and surviving hellion, which is amazing. So, so far as the landscaping, when I sat with the mayor in the planning department, I, the roundabout was landscaped beautifully, but had trees in the middle, which is no different than putting this on a boulder in the middle. You don't have to have all the plants if you use stone and rock and boulders. The plantings have to be maintained, and that costs money. And so you're taking care of them, you're weeding them, you're replanting them. Where, if it's done, where the bear is sitting on big rocks with, and you've seen grain fields and things done with different sized stones in it, all you have to do is use a weed spray. And there are safe ones that can be used. And it would be less, less work and maintain, maintenance fees, really, to me. I love gardening, so that's what I'm thinking of. The money is now that I collected is in the Community Funds Foundation. To pay him, he's agreed to the price, which there were three artists considered. The others were much higher. And when I found out that Charles would do it for this amount of money, I was, and as he said, well, you can tell them.
Yeah, it's pretty hard to tell them, so.
Well.
It'd be honored to do it.
He loves the community. He lives at Cedar Mountain and where I lived when I was a tiny girl. And anyway, we hope you approve it. We know the roundabout's going to take a year, which gives him, have it done before then. But, you know, we'd like to get it going before the price of steel goes out.
If this sculpture goes in the roundabout, people that visit the forest will see the sculpture and with proper signage, they'll say, damn, this is a nice place. Let's go see Brevard. So you'll get more people downtown from just having this sculpture the same as we have with the elk. They want to stop and see what's going on here. And as long as they're driving through, they don't spend any money. If we could stop them, maybe get some money out of it. Which will go for taxes and everything else.
When we did the musical instrument sculptures, there's three of them to represent the three kinds of music here. There's a violin that's at the entrance to Brevard College to represent the classical music. There's a tall, 18-foot-tall banjo that is to represent the bluegrass. And then a saxophone for the great jazz program that's at the college. And we have to, there's going to be a roundabout near the college, which is a great place for the banjo, which has been moved back on to the college property. The college let us put them there because the DOT, well, our city manager at that time was leaving and didn't discuss the matter very long with the DOT. We wanted them coming into Brevard by Strauss Park area so that as people drove in, they would say, wow, what's going on here? You know, with the musical instruments every like 30, 40 feet apart. But since they didn't get there, the college president said, and since the head of sculpture at the college had made them, he said, put them on the property and one across the street. Well, I was kind of disappointed in that, but I was very grateful to the college. But now we have the saxophone and we have the banjo that could be for other places. So just so that you know that.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. And we love, thank you for drawing that life-size so we can really understand the correct size of the bear. I don't have that kind of money. All right. Counsel, what staff is asking, they are asking you to do one of three things. To instruct staff to amend the scope of the McAdams contract to include a preliminary exploration of the bear statue proposal. And I believe that was an extra $2,200, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Or table the issue if you feel like you need more information, or reject the idea of the bear statue proposal. So I'm opening it up for, is there a motion from counsel regarding the bear statue?
Yes, ma'am. I liked your first option, instruct staff to take a look at this and find the $2,200 or whatever.
I'll second that.
I will open it for discussion. Mr. Daniel, why don't you start us?
I think this is great. I think North Carolina needs more art in their roundabouts. And I think this is.
We want the best in our roundabouts.
We'll start it here.
All right. Mr. Morrow?
You know, and Paul, I think Teresa, is this the third company she's worked for? But she's like the Energizer Bunny. She stayed on this project for, for what, 10 years or so? You know, when she was on her own. So, and Anne, I have to tell you, I offered, I pushed for a bear, you know, 20 years ago. So I'm all in. The fact is that, and most people don't realize that Pisgah is the largest bear sanctuary in the eastern United States.
Really?
Yes. And they are part of who we are. But, so I'm all in. And hey, Paul, I won the digester too. I lost that one the first time around too. You remember? I did. And then we got the digester because that's so cool. And it fits because of the size, you know. But anyway, so I'm all in, guys. And nobody has done more for our town in arts and culture and sculptures than these, this young couple in front of me. And it's true, because when you think about our themes, basically of arts and culture, woods and water, et cetera, we are known for our arts, but more for our sculptures now because of Anne Degara. And I'm going to say, Anne, it's you, not that other guy. You know, Tom, you know who motivates people. Anne does. Thank you for what you've done and how you underscored how important art and culture is to our community, Anne.
Ms. Holder?
Before I moved to Brevard three and a half years ago, I heard very little about bears. And they very seldom come into a big city. But every once in a while, since I've been here, I know there have been two sightings in my neighborhood. So I just want to know, will this bear direct the bears to go to the forest? So they won't come into my.
It would be located, you know, would be heading towards the entrance to the National Forest.
All right. They'd be headed up the, up the river.
So that bear would tell the other bears just go into the forest. The question that I have to staff is about the $2,200. Is that for maintenance? And is that annual or one-time? What is that for?
That would be a one-time expense. There would be some yearly maintenance expenses for this, but we'd have those anyway for the landscaping that's planned to go in the roundabout. And in a way, this might reduce the maintenance expense. We don't know that. That's one of the things that we'll assess. The one comment I do want to make is that the cost of the statue itself is not the only cost that this project will incur. There's going to be the cost of building a pad, you know, rearranging the plan, you know, providing the engineer-stamped reports that the state's certainly going to require. And so we will be coming to you all and asking for some additional help raising funds to cover those expenses as well.
Oh, and the other ones, the engineer volunteer? It was through the associations of people that have come here that volunteer. We had to do that for the tallest wind sculpture in North Carolina, Art Trek, at the library. And an architect here provided the National Business Association. When we had to dig the hole, we needed an auger to put the pole in the right way, as the engineers had. But I think that that will help, you know, cover expenses by people volunteering those services.
Thank you.
Did that answer your question?
It did. Thank you.
Mr. Wise?
This is really exciting. I will say, I was hoping for like a 70-foot bear that you could go inside of and walk up and then stare out. I'm 100% serious. But if we can't get there, if we can't, and I'm not ruling, I'm just saying, if, if we can't get there, this is a great start. I'm just, you know, just remember stares into the bear. Where you can look out of the bear. That's all I got to say.
That's enough. Thank you. Mr. Baker?
Yeah, I think, I'll be honest, when I first heard about this, I was a little, I'm very protective of Brevard and our identity in western North Carolina, separate from our neighbors. And so I was a little worried because, you know, Hendersonville has those bears. But I know. And I'm very glad to see that this is like a realistic and a great-looking bear and not like those cartoon funny bears that they have on the corner. I'm not into that at all. So I'm glad to see that it, and I think, you know, the scale, thank you for bringing that in. I think the scale is great to see. You know, we've certainly talked about this project in other, you know, other meetings. And I'll say that I do hope that we keep some of the trees because I think the landscape that we have at the existing roundabout, the uplighting on those trees is one of my favorite things about coming back to Brevard. And I think you could uplight the sculpture and uplight the trees as well. And I can picture that as a really great entrance. And so, yeah, and I just have one technical question, which is, so the Fund 75, I know we, in the past, the roundabout stuff and the multi-use path stuff was sort of all jumbled together into one fund. So we've now separated those out. So there's a specific roundabout betterment fund. And we have the $2,200 in that fund to cover this amount. Is that?
Well, that fund is technically underwater because we know that eventually we're going to have to pay for the installation of these betterments at the roundabout. And so next year during budget season, I'll ask for another contribution to that fund to keep this project going. But yes, this is a nominal amount that, you know, we can afford to pay out of that fund. And we'll economize in the years to come as we go.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And I'll just repeat, repeat at the, at the risk of sounding like a broken record that, you know, probably eight or eight years ago, on the, when I was on, serving on the tourism board, Teresa came and showed us the very first concept of this roundabout. And the tourism board, it was supportive back then. I, Lauren is on that board now, so I don't want to speak for them. But I'm sure that they remain dedicated to these betterments in the roundabouts. And I suspect that they would be willing to contribute to this as well, so.
I'm going to, yeah, I'll bring that up to them at our meeting.
That's all.
All right. I don't think we have a final motion. I think we just have concurrence.
No, there was a motion.
Thumbs up, huh?
There was a motion.
Oh, there was a motion?
To instruct staff to.
Oh, okay. Well, we have a motion and a second. That's right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Staff will continue to work on the bear. And so Anne, Paul, you'll have to talk together. All right, moving on. Our next item are the ABC Board appointments, board member and designation of board chair. Who's doing this?
I will. I'll do it. So the ABC Board is a five-member board who has, their members serve staggered three-year terms that expire at the end of July. This year, there was one seat that expired on July 31st, and staff conducted an open recruitment for citizens interested in serving on the board. One application was, a new, one new application was received this year. And an applicant who applied last year but was not appointed contacted me and said that he wanted to reactivate his application. For folks who are not appointed, we keep their application on file for one year. And so he requested that his application be considered again during this round. So the two applications, one from Frank Piersall, who was the current member whose seat expired. And the applicant from last year was Thomas Carpenter. Those two applications were sent to the Finance, HR, and Citizen Appointment Committee for review and recommendation. And at their meeting on July 28th, that committee recommended the appointment of Thomas Carpenter to the ABC Board. Additionally, each year, council is required to appoint one member of the ABC Board to serve as the chairman. That's an annual appointment. And typically, the ABC Board makes a recommendation or a nomination and a recommendation. This year, at their meeting on June 26th, the ABC Board nominated and recommended that Lisa Connor be designated as the board chair to serve one more year until July of 2026 as chair. So there's a resolution in front of you for consideration to appoint Thomas Carpenter to the ABC Board for a three-year term and to designate Lisa Connor as the ABC Board Chair for one year.
Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Wise?
Yeah, we looked at these two candidates. And Thomas Carpenter had a much more robust application. And Frank Piersall had been on there for two terms. So we, we are suggesting Thomas Carpenter. So we are suggesting Thomas Carpenter, and that's it.
Ms. Holder?
No comment.
Mr. Morrow?
No comment.
Mr. Daniel? Mr. Baker?
No comment.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution passes. All right, moving on to the item we moved from the consent agenda, which was the City Council Public Safety Committee Meeting Minutes of April 28th. And Mr. Daniel, if you want to, you asked to have that moved, if you want to give an explanation of what you're looking for.
The report that we had was for, what was that, April?
28th.
April 28th. It had the first quarter of 2025. I thought that was a rather remarkable little group of statistics in that we had four incidences on one day in that quarter. And I also appreciate what we have now is a more complete quarterly report, which is equally informative to me. But that just felt like something that needed further explanation to me, that there were four incidents. Is there any reason that we know that these happened all on one day or?
Chief Elmore's here, and I want to thank Chief Elmore. He wasn't expecting to come tonight, but you brought this up this morning and he agreed to stay and answer questions about this. So Chief Elmore, if you could share what you know.
Let me apologize and.
All right, that's fine. So what we do is, is we do this every quarter, we give it to the Public Safety Committee. And the day you were referring to was a nice sunny day. We just had four incidents in a day. The first was a pedestrian car at South Broad and West Morgan. An employee of DSS was leaving lunch, crossing the road, and the guy didn't see her, made a left turn and knocked her down. No major injury at all, she refused treatment. And the same day, and we added this in just because it's part of, it was Irish Creek, they crashed a bike on Irish Creek. Really doesn't affect the city, but it's something we do respond to and we just incorporate in there also. And then the biggest one that day was, it was down here on the Fisher Road. It was on May 29th, it was actually no, yes, it was May 29th, bicycle crash with a possible broken leg. And what we did on all these is, we had 24 incidents in a 17-month period since we started tracking. That's one and a half incidents a day, or a month, so it's one and a half a month. And out of those 24, we go back and consider what's severe injury. They're all severe to the people involved, but what's severe as being a head injury, a broken bone, age, being a kid or elderly person. And we had eight of those, eight that we considered severe with head injuries and things like that. The worst was the one on the bike path on Fisher Road. The guy had a stroke, it caused him to crash, and then people found him. We don't know how long he was there, but he has recovered and is doing fine. So I think that's what you were looking for, Gary.
Yeah. Okay, it was just.
We'll continue to do this and then we can add more or less, we can add more detail if you want more detail.
No, I just was, you know, it just seemed peculiar that four of them were on the same day.
Yes.
Out of the five of that whole quarter.
And it, yes.
Just coincidental.
And you can see our highlights, and I'm sure the police department can say too, Old 64 is a hotspot for this. You can see the bicycle wrecks on Old 64 with cars, for whatever reason. We don't have bike lanes in Brevard. I know we've started some like on Maple Street and things like that, but.
But it appears that the number of incidences are pretty stable, there's no increase, so, okay.
We encourage them to stay on the bike path, it'll help with those highway incidents we have.
I see people on, riding down the highway next to the bike path. I'm like, this is a dangerous road for a bicycle. So, thank you, I appreciate it.
Does anybody else have any questions on this? There's no action required. All right.
Can we accept it?
Oh, yes, I guess we need to, I need a motion to accept the Safety Committee Meeting Minutes.
I move that we do that, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
They've now been accepted. All right, and that was the last item on our agenda. We will go to our final remarks and we'll start with Ms. Morrow.
You know, just a real quick thank you and a shout out to David who's not here. Dean, I talked to Dean this week, but we finally, after all this time, have electric lights and security lights at the dog park. They're on and working and the neighbors of the state are absolutely thrilled to death. So thank you, Dean, I know you started it and ended up with David. He said it was the longest project he's ever had to work on. So sometimes you just have to keep working at it, don't you? Thank you.
Ms. Holder?
I don't have any comments.
All right, Mr. Wise?
Just a few things. One, as usual, I appreciate everyone who came and spoke to us today. I love this fiery group of people we're starting to get. As I was talking to you, Harvey, I really appreciate when people come and take us to task. I do want to emphasize that we hear what you're saying and if we don't act on your idea immediately, it does not mean we didn't hear what you're saying, it doesn't mean that we don't care, it doesn't mean anything like that. It means that things take time and we have a whole lot of other considerations that the public may not be fully aware of. So I don't want anyone to be disenfranchised because they come speak and then the next day we don't make a proclamation about how we're doing what they wanted us to do. Also want to congratulate Emery, he's not here, but I just, that blows me away, man. I was 10 years old when he started working for the city. If you can do math, that tells you I'm 35 and I feel every, every year of it. And then tomorrow, not just the only one Sunday, tomorrow morning, we're doing a groundbreaking for a new housing. Well, it's kind of underway, but. And we heard some people today talk about their concerns about housing in our city. I want to remind everyone, that's our number one priority. And housing, in my opinion, I will do everything I can to continue to push for safe, affordable housing for this community. And I think there's a lot of work to be done in that arena, but I think it's a very clear priority of not only this council, but the people in this city have told us that's what's important to them.
Daniel?
Yeah, I just have one thing. I'd like to, you know, tell a story about the Fourth of July that my wife related to me. One of the readers that are reading, I'd like to just read part of it, I'm not going to read the whole thing. But, and then I'll tell you the story. He has endeavored to prevent the population of these states, and we're talking about King George, for that purpose obstructing the laws of naturalization of foreigners, refusing to pass others to encourage their migrations hither and raising the conditions of new appropriations of lands. He has obstructed the administration of justice by refusing his assent to laws for establishing judiciary powers. He has made judges dependent on his will alone for the tenure of their offices and the amount and payment of their salaries. There's a few more lines along those line, that line. My wife was standing, listening to these readings and she says this guy next to her goes, and this is a quote, "That's bullshit," and walked off. Friends, this is the foundation of this nation, is the Bill of Rights, Declaration of Independence. If our citizenry thinks that that is something to be scoffed and walked away from, I think we have problems in this country. And obviously, we do, I think there are some of us who would agree with that more than others. But to hear this story of someone saying that in public, in a crowd, disrespecting this country, I thought was abhorrent and I just thought it bared sharing that that happened on downtown streets of Brevard.
Mr. Baker?
Yeah, just a few things. I know we've been off for a little bit from these meetings. We haven't had a council meeting since June. But I remarked at a committee meeting at some point that I was really impressed that the attendance at that committee meeting was so good. And that, so to be clear, the City Council took a month off from the meetings, but our committees are still very much working all month. And many of those committees also have citizen appointees. And the attendance was just great. And it's hard, you know, during the summertime, people are traveling. But I was really impressed that everyone made the time to keep the work of the city going. And some of those things showed up today on this agenda. So just a shout out to the people who volunteer on those committees and remain committed. I did want to talk a little bit about the homelessness issue that came up and I do think, I just wanted to say a thank you to our police officers and particularly patrol officers who are often asked to be the first point of contact for those folks. That is an incredibly difficult position for us to ask to put them in. And often, folks are dealing with mental illness or their own demons, substance abuse, but they are also human beings with rights. And balancing those two things in the moment and having that fall on, you know, one or two officers, you know, that is a very intense interaction, no matter what. And so I just wanted to thank them for that service to the city. I also want to say that I'm really proud of the city over the last few years that we have gotten much better connected with many of the nonprofits in our community who are working on this issue. I'm not going to name them all because I'll probably forget them, but forget one or two. But there are a lot of folks very dedicated to helping people find housing or who find themselves in this situation to get help. And there was a time when I think the city wasn't very well-connected with some of the nonprofit folks who were working, doing that work. But we are now and I know we're going to continue to be. I also want to say that you cannot disconnect issues of homelessness from issues of affordable housing. Obviously, every individual case is different, but our goal should be to house and provide a safe housing situation for every resident. And, you know, Councilman Wise mentioned that tomorrow we're going to be breaking ground on 42 affordable units. That is part of that response. And I'm really proud that the city has continued to work on that issue. And we've got, we're starting to bear fruit and it takes a long time. It can be frustrating, but I'm really proud that we've continued to push on that and look forward to seeing more days like tomorrow where we can really move forward on actual units. And speaking of housing, I did want to thank the School Board for approving, studying some land that they own across from Brevard High School for a potential affordable housing or teacher housing project. That is a project and a piece of land that has been studied for housing for many, many years, two decades. Before I ran for council, I met with Carol Parker, who was instrumental in getting the land trust established and they were looking at that piece of property. So I'm happy to see the School Board moving forward on that and I hope they know that the city is here to partner with them on that if they need our help and looking forward to news on that project.
Mr. Attorney?
I have nothing to add.
And yes, we know, we have a closed session. Get there eventually. Madam Clerk?
I have nothing, thanks.
Mr. Manager?
I have a few things, I'm afraid. The first is Chief Jordan, Chief Elmore, and I presume Sheriff O'N P have been busy bees here this evening during our meeting and they've been looking at the radar and thinking about what National Night Out consists of and how National Night Out is best served in good weather, which we're not expected to have tomorrow. And so National Night Out has been canceled for tomorrow, I'm afraid to report. So that's the number one thing I wanted to share. The second thing is, on Friday of last week, or maybe Thursday, late last week, the city pressed the button on our grant submission to Dogwood Foundation for seed money for our tax relief program. And that's not exactly the name we used for it, but that's what it is. And we came up with a scheme that, if it's funded, will refund the folks who have the lowest incomes and the highest increases in their property values the most. And so fingers crossed that that gets funded by Dogwood. Even if it doesn't, I think we've got a good program that we could pitch to other funders. And then in the spring, if it's not already funded, perhaps ponder funding it on our own. And one of our visitors earlier, Ms. Nguyen, who spoke before you during budget season, agreed to let us tell her story and our grant application, and we did, and it was a compelling one. And we hope that it'll convince the decision-makers at Dogwood as well. Since we last met, Chief Jordan has announced his retirement and so I want to thank him for his service and we will honor him in turn as his retirement day comes closer. But in the meantime, we have started advertising for his replacement. We hired the firm Developmental Associates out of Chapel Hill to help us screen and assess our candidates. And the job advertisement will be open throughout the month of August. And so if you are interested or you know anyone who is, please have them go to the Developmental Associates website, find our job description, and if they feel like they are a good candidate, apply for it. Counsel, I gotta have a mea culpa here. Last week, the HR and Finance Committee had an impromptu discussion on vendors on city property. And I gotta confess that I omitted a pretty important point. And so I won't go into it now, it's kind of technical, but suffice it to say, even though I think the committee thought we had disposed of that item, I'm going to have to bring it back because there was one important point that we didn't cover in our discussion and that was my fault. So apologies and that'll appear again on your next agenda. And then finally, I'm so glad that Holly was here and honoring, to honor Emery and Chair, congratulations from Governor Stein, and I'm so glad that she read the state toast because I enjoy it. But what I don't think everyone in this room knows is that she just read the first verse, which is probably the most well-known, but it's not the one that I like the best because it's not as applicable to us. I think the third verse is, and so I'm going to read it now. "Here's to the land where the galax grows, where the rhododendrons rosette glows, where soars Mount Mitchell's summit great, in the land of the sky, the old North State." So I'm going to read that from now on when we talk about the state toast. So that's all I have, Mayor.
All right, just a couple things. I think everyone here, I think all. I think everyone here, I think all elected officials are in agreement, we have been in, for quite a while, about the importance of housing, and trying to get, so that everyone in our community is housed. But we do have unhoused people in our community. And, you know, we are very fortunate that we work with all sorts of partners. You know, we do work with The Haven, we work with Sharing House, we work at The Cove with Bread of Life, with Thrive, with Blue Ridge Health. And we try to get really sort of all of the services that people need, the medical services, the mental health services, the dental services. We have a process. We've already got our partners working it. That doesn't mean it's easy, it's not easy, it's hard, but we continue to make progress. And what we are striving to do is to make sure that we have all the options, that that continuum of housing is out there, from the walk-in shelter to the long-term shelter, and the walk-in shelter is The Cove, the long-term shelter is The Haven, to transitional housing. And I am so happy that The Haven just opened the first transitional house here in Brevard, and it's already got three wonderful women that have moved into it, to subsidized affordable housing, which is what we're going to tomorrow with the 42 apartments. Then, moving on to regular housing. You have to have opportunities for people at every point in that continuum, and that's what we've been working for the last several years to do, and we're making progress. So, I know it's frustrating when we see folks that are unhoused, but I know the police are doing the best they can, we are working in the laws, and we are treating everybody with the respect that every individual in this town deserves. Because I think one important thing to remember is that being unhoused is not a criminal offense. It's not against the law not to be housed. So, we are working that, and I am just very, very happy that we have such incredible community partners. I think you saw tonight just how much our community contributes. We had a wonderful new statue coming, because the community got together, designed it, came up with the funding. We have a new Sustainability Council that is going to be working on sustainability. Again, a community-driven initiative. We have our Age Friendly Task Force, which Dr. Hartmanstein just gave us updates on what they are doing, and I am so looking forward to that video, which is going to be available nationwide, it's putting Brevard on the map. All done by community, and people stepping up, and being able to collaborate and harness that. That doesn't detract from our priorities. That augments us, and most of what they're doing is already in all of our documents, but we just don't have enough funding and enough manpower to do everything. So, the more we can use the wealth of experience, of dedication, of energy, of enthusiasm from our community, and put that towards those priorities, the stronger we are as a community. And so, those are tremendous examples, and I'm so happy that we're moving forward with those. And finally, you know, I just want to say that the opening today, where we had Emery getting recognized by, you know, for 45 years, we had two wonderful new police officers sworn in. It's all about people, you know? It's all about people and our staff. Brand-new police officers joining us, an individual who spent a lifetime of 45 years of service. We are so fortunate. I look out, I see the staff here, and I don't know how long everyone's been here, but I know Dennis, I know you've got a few years, you've worked with us. But we have such loyalty and such professionalism, and that's what allows Brevard to continue to be so special, and for us to really do all of the things that our community wants. Do we have everything always done? No. We have goals, and we're working on them, but it's all about the people, and I can't be prouder than I am about all of the employees here in the city of Brevard, and what they do day in and day out, all through the year, to support this community. And so, I just want to say thank you to our entire staff, because this community would not be the same without all of you, so. And with that, I think we need to go into a closed session. Do I have a motion to go into closed session?
To move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.